It's called a public hearing. Dealing with budget matters today. We have an agenda. First up is municipal and code?
So the first thing we're gonna go over are the zoning ordinances.
Zoning ordinances, okay, alright.
Yes, so I put on the top of your packet, just so you could have it, it is being posted, but the public hearing for the public to discuss these proposed zoning changes is on Thursday, April 13th, Jason will get it posted around town.
Is that year one?
I'm sorry?
I do apologize, I made the correction, but you guys didn't get the corrected side.
Send me a corrected one?
No, but it's on the website, it's corrected.
Alright. Okay.
Thanks for the catch, though.
So he's just gonna give a recap, who can just recap each one of the zoning ordinances for them, Jason?
Which ones do you guys have first? I don't have the-
Mineral extraction.
Oh, go for one of the big ones first.
All about getting it done.
Okay, so the mineral extraction, so it was the planning board's idea, as well as legal and other outside sources too, that our mineral extractions is pretty lax. And that's, you know, so the reason of doing this was, we went around to other neighboring towns, pulled their ordinances for mineral extractions, and we compiled an ordinance that, or an amendment to our ordinance that'll help regulate and bring everybody to conformity. Meaning, we have, I can't remember the exact amount of mineral extraction sites in Acton, but everyone has different conditions, different times, different, you know, sureties, different when they can extract or crush minerals. So this brings it, one of the things that this does is, within, I think it's two or three years, it requires everybody who is operating within Acton to come back within the planning board, so that everybody gets on the same page, so that Acton, we no longer have different operating hours for, you know, certain things. If you wanna go through page by page, instead of me just jumping around, we can do it that way, or I can just give you a kind of a-
We time, we, a certain time that we have to-
I've got a good half hour with him.
Okay, good.
So everything that's shaded and underlined is being added. And like I said, all this, this was not really, this wasn't made up, this pretty much came right out of other, the other people's ordinances. This has been sent to legal, and he thinks it is a good addition to our ordinance, and it helps protect-
Jason, you mentioned that you looked at other towns.
Yes.
Do you have that summarized someplace that-
Um, I can, we do have, I don't have it for you today, but I can give you-
I don't look at them all individually, but just something-
So we did Newfield, Lyman, Sanford, North Berwick, and, and I think Lebanon, no, we couldn't get, Lebanon didn't really have any. But this, 90% of this came from Lyman's ordinance, and they had one of the better ones. Sanford's in the process of redoing their mineral extraction ordinance, it sounds like they're going to a one-year licensing, which is gonna be, it's gonna be a lot for everybody.
Pretty much going to something like how we do our alcohol licenses for our-
You mess up, you might not get your license back again next year, that type of situation.
Okay.
So, a lot of it just goes over what they, what the board wants to see during submissions, backed-up documentation that gets provided from the state, as well as their, everything is to be sent from a civil engineer or comparable. This also states in our ordinance, this will add to the ordinance that there should be no crushing or screening on Saturdays and Sundays from Memorial Day to Labor Day, nor on the 4th of July. Which is what they've been doing with the last few applicants.
I, I know at one point in time, yeah, 'cause, well, like Turracott's tried getting there, do some crushing up there, they'd only give them a little short window, right?
Yeah, a lot of times it was, they were, some, for some pits, they were only giving them a week a year.
Yeah.
And, which, for the applicant that's in front of the planning board right now, that doesn't work, you know, and they understand that, so it's like, okay, well, when is most of the residents here? And then that's the weekends, during the summertime, the summertime and the weekends and then holidays, so try to be mindful of the people that come here and-
They wouldn't even let them crush at all, not in the summertime.
In the summertime, yeah.
In the summertime at all.
Nothing, so that's what it is, nothing from Labor Day to Memorial Day, or Memorial Day to Labor Day. And that's on the weekends, but that's, this also makes it so 4th of July, because if 4th of July lands in the middle of the week, they just don't want that disturbance. Goes on about the natural vegetation on page three and five, saying that it will require 100-foot property line and/or street buffer. It also talks about natural, 25-foot natural buffer will be maintained from any wetlands of a quarter acre to two acres, and that is to be determined by a credentialed professional, meaning a surveyor or engineer. That's not just something the board says, okay, that looks like a wetland. So if they do a plan, which they have to require to do a survey, if that wetland is shown on the survey, then they have to maintain that buffer.
If they have an engineer come in and say, I know a lot of the wetlands being done by up there, they'll have someone come and delineate it, that'd be from, so obviously it could be changed, and whatever's delineated, that's what they're talking about, right?
Yeah.
Can you explain these, these dates on item number three? Just to make sure I understand. Says about the two years and- I believe it's, it's on page four.
Page four.
Okay, that's the, where, that's when I started out saying that it was gonna bring everybody back in, so. Permits granted under this section shall expire after two years unless the applicant meets the following conditions.
Is that current permits or all future permits every two years? Because I couldn't distinguish here. I assumed you were talking about current permits. Maybe you should say that, current permits granted, is it under this section, is that-
Wasn't the plan to bring everybody, to put everybody back on the same schedule, though?
I don't think you can, though, legally.
No, I have the notes from, from legal.
I think that was your intent.
Even though we've already granted them a-
There's nobody, this puts nobody grandfather.
Okay.
This removes any grandfathered extraction facility or pit.
We wanna make sure that that's-
Yeah.
So once someone has a permit, let's assume, once this is enacted and they get a permit consistent with this, do they have to come back in for a renewal, or?
No, no, this is, this is to get, and maybe we should clarify it if it doesn't somewhere else, but this is to get anybody that, so right now, the applicant that's in front of the planning board, they won't have to come back in two years, you know, this is to get anybody-
Just catch everyone up.
This is to get them all in the same role. So, so he used Turk's pit, they have to come back in front of the planning board within two years. They gotta, they just wanted to go over the conditions, make sure that they're the same, the same if not really close to the applicant that's being approved right now, the applicant that was approved, you know, make sure the surety is up to date with what the town requires, as well as the state, because a lot of these pits that are operating have zero sureties, and that's just because they weren't-
State requires surety?
Not unless they're over 10 acres.
Okay, so it's really a, well, is that the actual pit, or the-
The extractions, the disturbed area.
Extraction area?
Extraction area, if it's 10 acres or more, then it has to be bonded with the state and the town.
So is that on top, it's-
Yeah.
State plus the town, whatever we require? Do we have any over 10 acres?
Um, I think Turk's is, or no, Turk's is 10 acres.
What do they call that up there, Quicry?
Quicry, yeah.
Yeah.
So- Yeah, and the only other one is the applicant that's in front of us right now is going-
He may be over 10?
He's looking for 35.
35, okay, so-
And so that, he, like I said, he gets bonded with the state as well as the town.
Is that certainly for the same purpose, or is the state looking for, it is?
It's for the same purpose.
So, hmm, how much is that?
Uh, with the state, it's 4,000 or 4,500, with the town, it's 6,000.
So it's gonna be a $10,000 per-
Per acre. Open acre.
So that's the letter of credit, or?
That's the letter of credit or bond, and this is a, this is a common practice, this is-
They're not putting it up.
Yeah, this is not something for Acton, this is not new to, just to Acton, this is you, North Berwick is charged, just charged, North Berwick just approved a pit for $9,000, an open acre.
Is, did you say letter of credit?
A letter of credit, a bond or cash escrow.
Yeah, a bond is insurance, but a letter of credit is where you get a guarantee from a bank, that they'll make that good.
The bonds, for like, someone like myself, a bond's cheap.
Yeah, it's insurance.
You know, if he has, let's say, 10 acres open, $9,000, $90,000 bond, that'll cost you maybe a grand a year.
I know, with, like excavation, if you're doing a large commercial project, sometimes they require a bond.
Yeah, I got bonds.
Will that be at the discretion of the planning board, which of those is chosen, or the applicant?
Uh, it's kind of a give or take with the, you know, what would you, you know, they give them the option. There's three ways, right now, in our ordinance, there's three, there's three forms of surety.
I'm pretty sure that I'm gonna take the cash option.
Yeah.
I wanna understand if the planning board could require cash?
Yes.
They, they can, they did with the solar, this was before my time, but in our ordinance, it does state that there, there's three forms of surety that the town accepts, it's one's cash, one is credit, and one is a bond.
That's still-
It's still the discretion of the, of the thing, yes.
Does it ask the discretion of the planning board which of those they'll allow?
Yes.
I do believe so.
I, I, I got an issue with that.
It shouldn't be like that.
I have not-
Well, I think, the issue with that is this, you know, the bond and the-
Shouldn't they have the choice?
It's kind of the same thing, okay? But the cash isn't. So when you turn around and tell one, you know, say you're the planning board, and you turn around and say, okay, hey, yeah, you're fine, we'll do a bond with you, you, I think I'm gonna get the $90,000 for the 10 acres open, cash.
That's exactly what we went through, I mean, the solar company on H Road, they, the planning board voted for cash, and they had to give over $90,000, Tom, in cash, and after that-
How many acres is that?
The company came back and asked the town to, asked us to go to one of the other ones, and they refused.
Yeah, they had a hardship, asked for hardship.
So for the, the general extractions, you know, we're doing letter of credit, but for the solar, they insisted on $100,000 cash.
That's struggling.
And I, I think I made the recommendation to your committee one night, your board, that, you know, myself, I don't wanna see the town of Acton just collecting money.
No.
And throw it in the bank and holding people's money for 20 years for no reason at all, I think we joked about it once, well, they did, at the planning board about how, you'll never see this money again, this guy's talking about being there 30 years, oh, in 30 years, he ain't gonna be around, and, and we have all these accounts open that, you know, the treasurer has to deal with all the time.
Gotta manage them and-
Do I gotta manage them, where-
Well, and it's a real financial impact on the applicant.
I myself believe that you, because if you give them the option to do that, they might just do that, where you take away that option and just go with the other two, because it's so similar, and they're not a huge financial impact, you'd be better off. Then they, but you give them the option to do that, the wrong person walks in this door.
So, so for the current applicant, that could be $350,000? 35 acres at 10,000 an acre?
Yeah.
Oh my god.
That, you know, we tried to get it less than 35, that's what, that's what they want, right, I know.
Just understand.
It's their choice, it's not ours, that's what the, that's what you set, and they still want that, it's, it's their choice to, they're, they're the ones, they're the ones applying for that many acres, it's not us saying, hey, we want you to do 35, I would like to see it more like five or 10, but that's not-
A 35-acre pit open is-
Is massive.
Very large, large pit.
No, I, I understand, I'm, I'm just trying to run the numbers here.
Yeah.
That somebody who is trying to run a business, they buy a piece of property, and, you know, how they're paying for that, capital debt, whatever, it's a big nut.
Yeah.
Especially in today's world, to have to then put up-
Part of the business, Tom.
Well, it's easy to say.
Yeah, well, it's not-
If you don't want the business, that's the way to do it.
Well, yeah.
That's the way to do it.
Jason, do you think the planning board would consider striking the word cash as one of the zoning ordinances?
Um, I'm not opposed to that, it's up to the board, I'd have to, I'd have to present the board with it, if you guys are looking-
The select board can do it as well, but, I mean, we really never-
They'd be doing it on the town floor also.
Yeah.
Uh, no, I don't think we would.
It would be nice to have them.
I don't think it's one of these sections that it's even being, that section of the zoning isn't being proposed, there's no change to that.
No, nothing, no change to that.
You know what I mean, if it was in one of these lines, maybe? Well, it goes back to the solar, I just remember what they went through, they really, really wanted their $100,000 back, and they wanted to switch to a surety, they wanted to switch to some other bond, and this was the previous planning board that, that chose it to be cash.
I don't have my zoning book, I don't know if it states that, with a discussion, you know, doesn't say that you have to do, the planning board makes, does it say, they set the surety?
No, they do.
Well, but there was some talk, there was some talk with Lenkowski about what the board, what the word board reference-
It says board, so we were trying to see if it was select board, he said, no, we're in this subject, doesn't even mention the select board, so it talks about the planning board, yeah, your hands are cleaner than that.
Yeah, so, I mean-
Well, the select board are mentioned in the next paragraph, so they're not completely clean, I'm gonna go get my zoning book.
Um, but Tom, go back to permits, so permits under granted under this section expire after two years unless the applicant meets the following conditions, so any permit that is under mineral extractive industry is that where that goes, so it's saying any permit, doesn't have to be granted today, any permit that is out there, conditional use permit, under this ordinance.
Is it any existing permit?
Yes.
Could you say that?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Just say any existing permit?
And how are the people that have the existing permits gonna know that they need to do this?
Uh, well, I'll send out some kind of notification, yeah, I, yeah, because we don't want them to get caught with-
Oh, right, that's, you know.
So, yeah, no, I would, once this gets approved, I'll definitely be contacting their entities.
Planning board meeting, and-
Tomorrow.
So maybe we could add in, maybe no cash, change that maybe?
Um, we can't, I mean, that stuff's on the select board.
I would suggest doing that, possibly.
Are you going to that meeting?
Yeah, I'll probably be there, I meant to go to the last one, I missed it.
He was napping.
Probably could've been napping. Is there anything, I, when I went through this, I didn't, is there anything in the zoning about how we're gonna enforce the bonds and everything like that, is that something we do outside the zoning?
Um, that, there was something in here that they had to show proof of it the first of the year, or something like that, I thought, so.
Because, I mean, we-
You know, think about a mortgage, where you have to have approved insurance on your house, and the bank, I believe, is required to be notified, which is equivalent to us, by the insurance carrier, if the policy's canceled.
If it lapses, yeah.
Yeah.
Is that language in here?
Right now, yeah, so right now, I mean, there's an insurance on the applicant that's in front of the planning board, and the town of Acton is the-
Co-insure.
Co-insure, so if they, if they lapse on their insurance, then the town gets notified.
And then what happens?
Well, that's what I'm concerned about, what happens when, because I've had this done to me before, where I've had a contractor come in, subcontractor, they canceled their insurance, so I didn't know about it, I didn't get notified, obviously, but after the fact, there was no repercussion, I ended up having to pay penalties because of that, but if, say, they turn around and say, okay, I got my approval, boom, boom, bang, two years later, I canceled that insurance policy on that, we get notified, but what are we gonna do if they do that?
Where is that listed, Jason, I haven't seen that, that we're listed as a lien holder?
We want it written here that we can either-
It's not, that's in here.
No, that's in their application.
I mean, you give them so many days, right?
Alright, so you might wanna clarify that to him, because that's always asking you.
Fines, and then expulsion of their permit, you know, if, if they don't, you know, they're legit.
So just for clarity, just so he's, I don't want you to think he misspoke, he's saying it's in their application, it's not part of the zoning ordinance that was listed as a-
It should be here. We, we wanna black and white so that we can, there is repercussions for not doing the right thing, we've got pits right now that don't have them.
Right, and that's not-
That they're supposed to have them, am I, am I not correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Who's supposed to have them?
Yeah, there's, there's some pits in town that have been here quite a while that don't have any of the stuff that they were-
It sounds like to this review process, we're gonna make sure they do.
So can that be a then?
Correct, 100%, so I had, so there's a pit that's operating at the end of H Road that has, is up and running again, he has zero surety on his property, and we don't even, his conditions, it's such an older pit, where I couldn't even find the conditions, so I, I asked him to come, him and his consultant to come in front of the planning board, when I talked to legal, he goes, he told me, you can't do that, it's nowhere in your ordinance, you can't just have them come in, so this now brings it so that-
What does the state require? Do they require a cash bond?
It's if it's only over 10 acres.
But if it is-
Oh, no, 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 there's a letter of credit or, or bond, I think there's-
So if they aren't requiring cash, why would we?
Because it was in our ordinance, I don't have, I don't have an answer for that.
I mean, but the option-
We're required-
I just don't have that, I don't have that answer.
The board has an option of exercising cash, and if the state doesn't do that, I don't know why we would.
I think we agree that we pull that out, and I wanna see something in here where there's what the, you know, what the consequences are for not doing certain steps of the sureties.
Um, David, I'm sorry, Jason, the form of guarantee is what I'm looking at, correct?
Correct.
So it does say, performance guarantees may be provided by a variety of means limited, but not included to the following, which must be approved as to the form and enforced by the board of selectmen.
That might be the, that might be a different one, then.
Well, the-
Because you're, you're, is that, you're looking for a performance guarantee, right?
What is this form of guarantee, that the board is responsible for?
I don't know, you'd be looking under conditional use and application.
Okay, so they're not, all the form of guarantees aren't the same for every project?
I think we didn't get a cheap one with the nice tabs on it to-
Because this is what my CEO gave me after I made all of his changes and put the books together for him, go figure. Any other questions?
Wow.
He asked!
Wanna go back?
I was just messing around, I just drove myself over with a bus.
Just kinda fade away, Jason.
Alright, so two things, not to get too far off track, but if my board is in charge of something, I need to know what that is, so what is this form of guarantee that says is enforced and guaranteed by them?
I think we're, I thought, I thought we were all in the, but the insurance concept was just, just to, you know, have them put the accounts and have, have the threat to do that, but I don't believe-
Because it might be under this, under this section, and it's site plan review, I think, for site plan review, but if you come to performance guarantees on conditional use applications-
So what is it, so that one?
This is site plan, this goes-
So all site plan reviews, that's supposed to be doing?
Which we don't have any, except for solar. Um, but conditional use, performance guarantees falls under this one right here, not site plan.
So what's the other?
Site plan review, so I mean, there's maybe some other options, some other changes that should be made to-
They should be, they should be consistent throughout the document, do you agree?
I, I agree.
Just so that you know that we're treating them all the same, plus to get the board, the select board out of it. Alright, so at the time of approval of the applicant for conditional use, the planning board may require the applicant to tender either a certified check payable to the town, a letter of credit from a lending institution, or a performance bond payable to the town. All guarantees must be, the conditions that amount of certified check, letter of credit, or performance bond shall be determined by the board.
Which, so that place the-
The planning board, yes, yeah, and Jason and I did get clarification on that, but... So I guess the question is, would they be willing to strike out certified check and limit it to just the two?
Jason, why don't you take that back and talk to them about it?
The, um-
I, I think you understand the intent here, I believe.
I mean, we want surety, but it doesn't have to be cash, you know, we'd like the letter of credit and the, the bond.
So you wanna strike cash altogether?
Yep.
I would prefer to, uh-
And do you think they would support at the same time changing the form of guarantee on the site plan review to make it mirror one another, to get the board of selectmen out of this, and let it be handled by the planning board?
I'm sure they'll be fine with that, is that something you guys, an article, you want an article in front of you guys and, after tomorrow?
Well, I'm just thinking, the performance guarantees would be the same for everything in this book, right, they would all go through the planning board, all be the same way, all the same methods, whatever you deem.
It's my understanding we have time here, do we not?
Um, well-
It's going in June?
It is going in June, but we are, you know, we have committed to a schedule with the Warren and Finance Committee, and there are public hearings that have to be held so many days before, Jason's got all of those scheduled.
So we meet with the Warren and Finance next Monday, and then I have a public hearing scheduled, just because we were trying to be proactive for April 3rd, so that way, if any changes, which you guys sound like you have changed, we have time to make changes from the April 3rd, from what you guys say, what the Warren Finance Committee say, what the general public say, then we'll hold another public hearing within 30 days of the town meeting, and, and that's, that's the procedure that I have to meet.
It's actually April 13th?
April 13th, yeah, because I have to, you have to meet certain deadlines, I have to have it publicized so many days, you know, so.
You know, and the other option, I mean, the select board, I'm sure don't wanna step on the planning board's toes, but they can always, you know, if the planning board feels like they've made the changes they wanna make, and would support the board doing it as an article, I mean, that's an option based on the amendment portion of the ordinance as well, if they prefer that.
What does that look like, Jason? The amendment portion?
The amendment, right in the very beginning, it says, "Any amendment to this ordinance may only be adopted by a majority vote at a special or regular town meeting. A proposal for an amendment to this ordinance may be initiated by, A, a majority vote of the planning board, B, the board of selectmen, C, an individual through the request of a planning board, or D, a written petition."
Okay.
But normally, we don't go over the heads much, but we don't wanna, you know, but we have given them deadlines, and they follow, right, but they follow the deadlines, and I have a feeling that's what Jason's thinking.
No, Jason, if, if they, if they-
Yeah, because I'm, for some reason, I have more eyes, wondering if you got it, but this talks, and it flips over, it talks about your insurance, your surety, all, right there, it's already requirement.
Jason, if the planning board doesn't wanna change the language, I would like to understand what the conditions might be that would cause them to require a cash bond, what is it, why are they, why do they wanna preserve that provision? So, yeah, I can ask them- Or situation might they envision that would cause them to say, no, not on the, no bond, no insurance, we want cash?
Yeah, and I, so I think the, one of the issues with the bond was that bonding agencies can come and go, but letter credits are gonna stick around, the banks aren't usually going unless you're in Silicon Valley.
But even if the bonding agency goes, we would be notified, and the, and the landowner would have to, the operator would have to get a new one.
Correct, according to our, how it stated.
I think, if, you know, a, a bank can cancel a letter of credit.
And this planning board hasn't asked for any cash, right, I mean, those were done on previous-
No, they, no, they have not, some of the members were on the board when solar-
Yeah.
And they might be able to answer that question, I just-
I just would like to understand.
Kinda dropped the ball on getting them here.
I mean, you could go do just a, just a bond period, and be done with it, to make it easy for, make it run across the board, the only reason a cash bond, the only reason somebody would actually wanna do a cash bond is if they couldn't get bonded, and they couldn't get a line to the bank, which is probably not a good idea to, that's not good at all, it's, so, at the end of the day, you know, a bond is a bond, that covers everything.
Yeah, um, one of the big things that we put in here, too, right now, if these, these applicants are in, if they're in violation, if they're operating outside their hours, if they're crushing when they're not supposed to, or, or all this other stuff, if they're not, um, you know, um, we had, I had really no authority, the town had no authority over what to do with them, other than just sending them a fine, like, having legal send them a fine, or you send them a letter, you gotta go through the proper chain. This now puts it that the code enforcement can put a stop work order on them. Um, and then, they have 90 days, so failure to comply with the remedial actions-
Page one?
I'm on page four or five.
Oh, okay.
And, um, "Failure to comply with remedial actions required by the code enforcement officer's report within 90 days from their, from the date thereof will result in a stop work order until the remedial actions have been completed, including payment of all fees and penalties. If the owner or operator does not comply within one year of the date of the code officer's report, the conditional use permit may be revoked or modified after reviewed, after review by the planning board."
So he's already got a cease and desist after 90 days, so-
Well, it's a stop, you, you're messing up, stop what you're doing, you're not allowed to operate until you fix it, there's fines that come along with that. Um, so in our ordinance right now, a stop work order, just to have that removed is $275 and $200 per day after that. Um, which, for some of these things, it's, it is, but that's just in our fee schedule as of right now.
So it says that you will, you will issue a stop work order.
If they're in, uh, failure to comply with some of these, if, so, um, on the top one-
Didn't give you any wiggle room, it says, if I read it right, "will result in a stop work order," so you have to issue one.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah, right now, I don't have any-
If they're not complying.
No, that was the intent, regardless of what the issue is.
Right, yeah.
Right, there are, there are infractions, there are infractions, and regardless of what that issue is, you're required after 90 days to shut them down.
Well, no, um, if, if, so, I, I jumped a paragraph, but within 30, um-
Well, they have 90 days to fix it.
Right, so they have 90 days to fix it.
Yeah.
If they don't fix it within nine, you know-
Then they have a year to fix it.
Then they have, yeah, you get up to a year, you get up to a year, you get up to a year, and if you don't fix it within a year, but-
I think they're shut down after, the way this reads, you shut them down after 90-
Yeah, you shut them down after 90, right.
If there's a violation.
Right.
You shut them down, and they can, that order can stay in place for a year.
Up to a year.
Which means they cannot operate.
Right.
And then the remedy-
Which, what industry doesn't want to get back up and running? They're losing money every day they're not running.
I have no problem with that, I'm just, I just want to make sure that, regardless of the infraction, you are going, if someone comes and says, you know, somebody's oper- you know, they're crushing on the weekend.
Yeah.
And they just keep doing it, you're gonna shut them down.
Yeah. And, and so the other ordinance that we stole from, actually terminated their-
Yeah?
It terminated, but I didn't want to use that word because some people here that see that word and just say, "Whoa, hold on," you know, and I didn't want to get this ordinance thrown away just from being too strict. Um, so I, you know, this gives them the option to fix it.
So, my question is, because I haven't gone through the whole thing yet, is there anything in here, say, um, July 4th weekend comes in, a pit's out crushing, okay? Now, if you show up, you're gonna call that they're crushing, or whatever, um, what's the recourse then?
There really isn't one, I mean, most people are pretty, if I show up, if, if a code enforcement shows up and you say, "Hey, you guys need to stop what you're doing," they're gonna, most people stop.
So, why I'm asking this question is this, if it costs me $500 for a fine, say we have a fine in here for 500 bucks, I'm gonna pay the fine, because I'm gonna make a lot of money to pay $500. But the problem we have here, you have to have a recourse for being bad.
You're right.
Okay, so that, so every July 4th, this company decides, screw it, I'm gonna pay the $1,500 to crush through the weekend, that's cheap money, really, okay, to make, you know, $30,000 worth of material, and that'd be a pretty good deal for the pit owner, right?
Right.
But if you write them up for three times, you're doing the same thing, what happens?
So when we, I was dealing with violations with another, um, pit, they weren't in violation, but when I had talked to the legal counsel, um, there's a chain, you can't, I can't just go say, "Okay, you're operating today, I'm gonna give you a fine."
Yeah.
You gotta give them a letter, you gotta let them know what they're doing wrong. You gotta, there's a chain that you follow.
There is a chain to follow.
Yeah, there's a chain to follow, I can't just say, "Hey, you're screwing up, here's your $1,500 fine."
But I understand, okay, but what I'm saying, I'm not saying you're gonna get fined on the spot.
That's already in place right now.
But, after so many times, okay, do we have something in this that says, okay, um, after so many violations, where this, you can bring this back to, to the planning board?
No, uh, not that I know of as of right now.
That's what we really have to have, we have to have some sort of recourse for them to say, "You know what? Uh, I don't want to screw up here."
Right.
Yeah.
Instead of knowing they're gonna get a warning on 4th July weekend, because that's really all you can do now, right?
They could do something-
I would have anyway, I would only, I, I can't just, like I said, unless they did it every year, that's a different-
Because you could, you could do the letter, and say, "Okay, um, we got proof that you did it, da-da-da-da-da, you got a warrant, and the next one's gonna be a $500 fine, next one's a $1,000 fine, what to do, you know?"
So that's already in our ordinance right now, but like I said, you just gotta follow that, that thing, so if you, you mess up once, then you get a notice of violation, and then you mess up, and if you keep on doing it, then the town has the ability to, to fine them. But we never had the ability to put a stop work order on them, or had, never had the ability to bring them back in front of the planning board.
But there's nothing, there's nothing saying you can revoke the, the permit either.
Yes, there is.
Is there?
Yes.
Jason, let me just-
On, um, so on C, on page four or five, with the last pa- last sentence of C, um, "The conditional use may be revoked or modified after review of the planning board."
But, does it say, what tells them, how do you get to that point, though?
Well, that's where you go through that whole, well, this is the one with the 90 days, and they don't, if they don't keep on doing it, um, you know-
That's fixing stuff, but, you know, I'm talking about, um, you know, like a violation like, you know, say crushing, that's a little different than a fix-
Do it one weekend-
That's an action.
Wait three more, do it another, does it, wait three-
Well, your 90-
Does the 90 days start with the first, or with the second?
In my eyes, it would start with the first.
Okay, alright.
Okay.
Then that makes sense.
You know, Jason, just my, my point of view?
Yeah.
So long as it's clear?
Yeah.
I think, I think, uh, the rules ought to be rather strict, quite frankly. If they're not followed, there ought to be a consequence, I mean, the pits have been enough of an issue.
If they're not strict, what happens is, you get to that point where now, how are you trying to regulate it because there's so much gray area?
Yeah.
Um, you know, Sanford's had that issue, okay? And then, then the reason why they're going to licensing, because of the issues they were having.
Right.
And that's how they're remitting it, by getting really strict, by going to a one year license.
All I ask is that it's clear.
Yeah, I can review it a little more, with your input, with your input, and then Monday night with the Warren Finance, um, it sounds like there will be some, some changes made, just to clarify it a little bit more.
Okay, good.
Uh, because I think this is something that the town really needs before we really get caught any, with our-
Yeah.
Well, I think you guys are doing a great job getting to this point.
Yeah.
You know, it's just-
Has, has the, has the entire ordinance ever been reviewed by our advisors?
Um, not in the, the time that I've been here.
Has anybody ever thought about doing that?
I could send it out to, um, to one of these planning development commissions and have them review it.
You know, because every year we have new changes, and I wonder if it wouldn't be wise to just, you know, we got a consultant who knows, you know, best practices, right? Why not, why not have them take a look at it, and-
Oh, no, definitely.
Perhaps not for this meeting, but, you know, at a, at a future meeting, if there are changes that ought to be made, let's make sure they're all up to date.
Yeah, I mean, that's something that we can work on for at least the next town meeting.
Yeah.
You know, that, because that would take a lot of time dissecting it and looking into it, and, and sometimes too many changes is, is not good.
Well, if, if you're, um, I would imagine that, that there would be a cost to that.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Yeah, yeah.
We've got money set aside for that.
We do?
Yeah.
Okay.
Twenty thousand bucks, yeah, we set aside for it.
Pretty much, no, no, seriously, pretty much, that's exactly what it's for.
Alright, we've gone over a half hour, so-
Have you gone over the other ordinances?
Um, let's just, we'll just touch on these ones quickly, so, um-
There's three other notices, Tom. There's three other ones.
Yeah, we'll just hit these really quickly, so another one is a, I don't know which one is, I have a-
Solar.
So, I, oh, so this one, we struck some of the stuff that was, um, was an issue last time, where it came to, um, having the town as a surety holder, um, as well as the, the site. Um, one of the big things was, well, you can, you can see it one day, you can't see it one day, and then someone cuts down trees, you can see it the next day.
Yeah.
Um, so we had struck in some stuff out of there, um, but other than that, a lot of it's still the same. Um, it's pretty much just trying to get ahead of, of the game, like right now with the mineral extractions, we're, we're behind. Um, this one, was just trying to put something in our ordinance, because we have all this farmland, in my eyes, we have all this farmland, and if farming's not the industry anymore, what are these people gonna do with all this land at some point?
Very lucrative.
Um, so, in order to put something in structure in our ordinance that helps Acton before it's too late, I guess.
Helps them in what way?
Um, just to put it, like, have the conditions like this, like the mineral extractions, right now, we don't have anything.
Pretty much being able to do it, have something-
Yes, that's what I wanted, to be able to-
Yeah, just, it's being able to, to have authority over it, to, to minimize the impact of the areas, um, because as of right now, it's, um, we don't have that in our ordinance.
What does the surety look like in here? Is it the same as, uh, the pits?
No, it's cash.
No, it goes by, what they did with, um, with the H Road one, it goes by, it went by kilowatts. How many kilowatts is that, that field producing? And I think that's what, how it went, it was like 52 cents per-
Is that like a state standard, or?
I couldn't, I don't, I don't have the answer to that.
But in this one, it, it says that the town, it says, "The applicant shall submit to the town a surety in the form of a cash escrow." So completely the opposite of what we just asked him to go back and-
And that's fine, and I can change that too, but that was because the la-
The last one.
One was required cash.
Right.
And so that's, when we had this drawn up, this was drawn up by a consultant, this was drawn up by North Star, um, and there was a lot more to it, and the cash escrow was because that was what the town had required, the last, the planning board had required, um, with that last applicant.
Like 125%.
That project right there, we've got 90 some thousand dollars of that money in the bank.
125%.
Now, if we had done a bond on that, okay, because in 20 years, then 90 some thousand ain't nothing. But if we had done a bond, we could have asked for a $250,000 bond on it, which would have cost them peanuts compared to the 92,000, and long haul, okay, and we would have been covered by that.
So is that something we can? I don't know, I don't know where that kilowatt-
That doesn't make any sense either.
Well, that's how they did it the last time, it was, they, it was so, it was like 52 or 53 cents per kilowatt.
I, I understand, I-
How much it was producing.
Um, when this came up at town meeting last year, wasn't it last year? Yeah.
Yeah, I did.
My question was, how do you determine what you need? And I don't think they had a, um, an explanation.
So the kilowatts, they, they were going by the kilowatts for the reclamation?
That's what they did for the, uh-
That doesn't make any sense, you would-
That's what they did for the surety.
And everything else, just like a pit.
Well, and, and most of that has to do with hazardous material?
Yeah.
I would imagine.
But at the end of the day, you're not gonna, if you're, you're putting a solar project in and say it's a five acre solar project, it's gonna be, it's kilowatts, it's all gonna convert over, but it's the area disturbing, just like a, a reclamation of a pit, it should be per acre, but, uh, done accordingly.
So this right now, and Jen did point it out a second ago, "A removal surety required for all solar farms upon site approval and prior to applying for an applicable building permit for a solar farm, the applicant shall submit to the town a surety in the form of a cash escrow, to be approved by the planning board in the amount of 125% of the estimated removal cost. Such costs will account for physical removal of all structures, systems, equipment, security barriers, and electrical lines. Removal of all structures, systems, equipment, it's, um, oh, I just read the same line over, sorry. Disposal of all solid and hazardous waste. The stabilization of all, of stabilization or revegetation of the site as necessary to minimize erosion." Um, so getting rid of cash would be the biggest thing right there.
I think you could, you could literally rewrite that line, instead of doing 125%, you can do, you know, a la- a larger percentage and run a bond.
Well, it's 125% of what the estimated removal cost is, and the town doesn't make that, that estimation.
Who does?
They do.
It would be, it would be a professional of, of their-
So they're required to get a professional command and estimate removal, or restoration cost, if you will?
Yeah.
And how often, yeah, are they required to do that, every like three or four years?
Um, the amount should be reviewed by the planning board or designate every 10 years.
10 years, yeah.
Uh, because these things last 25 years.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so if, if, if they find out that, um, the removal cost is, it, it has gone up, um, 35%, then the surety goes up.
Yeah.
That's why if you had a bond, you could change your bond over the phone.
Right.
By doing a cash, now you're asking the, whoever the landowner or whoever, say, "Okay, well, I already got $90,000 of your money, um, we're gonna go up on that, so we need another 30 or 40,000." What happens when they can't do it?
Yeah.
Jason, the one that kind of stuck out to me, number eight, am I reading that right? So solar farms must maintain a 50-foot wooded buffer at the property's front, side, and rear lots?
If it's, if there's a wooded vegetation there as of right now. If not, then they have to plant, they, they plant stuff.
Well, it says the planning board may require additional planting, so if we, if we had the H Road project-
They actually followed the, they followed the-
At the time.
They had a plan, yeah.
Cause there wasn't any wooded there.
Well, but it doesn't, it doesn't say, so would they have required trees all the way in the front of that property, the 50-foot?
They're, they are, they're, I actually, because I called them up, because, in one of the conditions of approval, I gave them their occupancy, that they had to have their revegetation done by June 1st of last year, and I called them up in August, and, "Hey, um, I don't see your vegetation." I was looking at, they had two revege- revegetation plans, I was looking at the old one, not the amended one. So, I met him down there, and he goes, "Oh, no, look, they're right, it's all right here," and I was like-
Oh, no, no, I wasn't questioning that, I'm just asking, is that how it's worded though?
Saplings here.
All, so going forward, all solar plants would have to have 50, whether they had it?
Yeah, and it's no different than extraction, they get to maintain a 100-foot buffer, um, because of the, that, the 100-foot buffer helps more with the noise, as well as the site.
You know, it's no different than down in the lake, there you do a septic system down on the lake, you do the 12-point system, you gotta replant, this and that, and here's what it is, yeah.
Alright, the next one they have is the, um, the conditional use as far as the adding the statement, the 6.63.
So, before we go too far, are you gonna, are we gonna, are you gonna ask the planning board to change that?
Yeah, I've stuck that on there.
Okay, good, sorry about that.
They just added one line, it looks like, a couple lines, on the "No changes shall be made."
Yeah, "Whenever any parcel attractive land subject to a conditional use permit changes ownership or leaseholder, the new operator shall review the conditions with the code enforcement officer. The new operator will provide a certificate of insurance citing the town of Acton and renewal of the surety pertaining to the project." Just pretty much, if this didn't pass, this was gonna cover it.
Is, is this for pits, or is this-
For everything, any, like, if Willie's, if Willie's airroom changes hands, they they have, the owner, the new owner has to come into the land use department, review the conditions, um, and make sure that they're providing a surety. So.
You know, it's a good idea that they do that too, because, you know, you take a new bar owner, never owned a bar, not knowing what it's supposed to do, from many a learn.
Well, Iron Tales has so many different things going on, you know, if somebody buys that, then they don't know what's going on, so I mean, it's just, it's really a good thing to do. Um, the next one is very simple, it's just making it more, it's easier for the planning board to, to meet, meeting deadlines. Um, our, we had to notify, um, the residents within 10 days. By, by, yeah, and we moved it to seven, so we can do it in one week instead of two weeks.
Anything else, Jason?
No.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot, Jason.
All right, who's up next?
Transfer station.
Robin Ham, you having a tough time there, Robin? You okay?
Yeah, my back.
Yeah. Oh, boy.
Running around that truck all night plowing.
No, it was hurting before that.
Oh, okay.
You want a more comfortable chair?
No, this is fine.
Okay.
So his update should be fairly quickly, fairly quick for him, um, I'm sure he's extremely tired. We went through and, um, Kelly and I, and he met on Friday or talked about things on Friday. Essentially, what we heard you say at the last selectman's meeting is you wanted to make sure that the Triano and the Casella numbers were accurate. Um, what we calculated based on Triano was, um, we are currently paying 282 based on the contract that we have until October of 2023. They've given us a price of $360 is their increase effective November 1st. And then the next two years, they're willing to give you another three-year contract. Yes. They're willing to give you another three-year contract in October, if you're interested at 3% each year.
Go over that one more time, I'm looking for my paperwork here.
I'm sorry. So the current contract that we have is actually 200 and, it was $265 the first year, 273 the second year, and 282.
Correct.
Yeah. That's the current contract that you've already signed. The 282 is going to stay in place through October, because you're already, you're still in the contract.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what you're paying now, right? We're running that on, twice a week they pick up, Robin?
Uh, Toronto picks up twice a week.
That's what you told us?
Yeah, we called you.
Two weeks, they got twice a week?
Twice, yes.
So is a little, 10,152 will take us from July to October. And then in November, if you stay with them, with this new contract, they're going up to $360. So we figured the remainder, 34 weeks of the fiscal year, would total essentially about 24,480. So, and then he.
Hold on, for 12, uh, 16 weeks was 10,000?
18 at the 282 price, because we're in a contract.
18,000 for 16 weeks.
Right.
So the other 36 weeks is how much?
34 weeks is 24,4.
Yeah, cool, by the way.
Because it's twice a week.
Okay, all right.
And then the rental fee is gonna stay the same at 75. And then based on summer and every other busy times, he has built in 10 extra runs, just in case a third one needs to come.
How long have we had them?
It's been a while. Well, three-year contract, I don't know if they're.
I wanna say this is our, I think this is, no, this is probably our third three-year contract with them.
Yeah.
Seems like it's time to bid it out.
Well, no, I think we play, we gotta at this point.
Yes.
You're talking an $80 ton increase roughly, is that right?
We, we have time, but we ought to start the bid process soon.
I, and I had an idea that that was gonna go up anything right now, trucking.
It may be with diesel, I assume diesel's driving it, although diesel's back down too, so.
So that's what's in that number now, and, and I certainly agree that you should go out to bid, but we had to have something to put in there, so we went with worst case scenario.
I'd rather come on a good side than a bad.
And then the other, uh, number that we looked at, and Robin, you'll find this in your box, um, your pine tree casello contract is actually a 10-year contract good through 2025.
Okay.
Uh, based on the contract, they are literally going up a dollar each year. Um, Kelly and I pulled the contract, looked at the last run, per, per ton. So right now, uh, the thing, the contract started at $73 a ton, we're up to 81, cause we're eight or nine years into the contract, eight years into the contract, cause it expires in 2025, so.
You talking about Triano?
No, we're talking about.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Those two lines have been adjusted based on the information.
Is that the $57,000 item here?
Kelly, we don't which lines those are.
No, pine tree is, is a separate, 74, and it's going to 78.
All right.
Pine tree has its own line, it's the 504.
What's the demo debris? Who does that?
Is that Triano?
Who, demo?
Yeah.
Uh, Punske.
Which one is Triano, Kelly?
Toronto is solid waste.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So Punske is going up.
Well, did their price go up?
They're going up 20%.
Did you also add in more demo due to the fact that we've been, the demo's been going up now? Get them all hauled in? So that's just the increase on.
I don't have it with me.
Yeah, you know, that may be perfectly reasonable, but is that a one-year contract?
I don't think you have a contract with Punske.
Yeah, I don't think it's a contract.
Let's, let's do them both at the same time.
So you want Robin to put together some information for RFP?
Yeah, we're gonna need information about frequency, how many tons, that kind of thing, so we can, uh, prepare a bid.
For a year, six months, or?
I'm sorry?
For a year or six months?
Well, I think we wanna do like a three-year, like.
I would ask for a three-year deal, we'll see, yeah.
Probably.
They may not do it.
One year, but now you got waste management, you got all these big companies that do demo. You know, cause you're talking almost a $10,000 increase in that one line.
All right, so we'll bid those two.
But that demo, that demo also included all those other lines that we deleted.
Yeah, yeah, okay, well, that's, that was like $7,000, wasn't it?
For shingles, for shingles.
Shingles, okay. So really, what was the increase then? How much was the increase of, so you're talking like $3,000 then, roughly?
I don't know it off the top of my head, but I just know that we moved a lot of, three other lines up into demo, and I don't have my original notes here.
Cause shingles was a separate item, we had a container.
Who takes those?
Punske did.
Okay, he's taking all of them?
Glass.
Yeah, he takes the glass and, and, no, not plastic.
Not plastic.
Uh, wood, furniture, that sort of stuff.
Which was all in separate line items before.
Glass and shingles were in two separate lines, we can combine them.
20%, whether it's one item or five.
Yeah.
You know, it's still a big increase here, so we, we should, um, we should prepare a bid on this. Just good business. These may be perfect rates, there may not be anything wrong with them. Okay, anything else on this?
So even though, uh, it looks like a big increase down bottom, but that's because we put the health insurance in this line, as you saw, as you indicated, so just keep in mind that 27.
Where does that come out of? Municipal?
Came out of municipal, now it's into transfer station. Um, the only other thing that I wanna mention while Robin's here, it's a good time to have the conversation, I did ask him, um, and I, and I trust we'll hear from Warren Finance, but you might want Robin's, um, input while he's here. He mentioned to me when I asked him how the meeting went on Monday, that, um, there was some discussion from the Warren Finance about, um, as we're separating the health insurance, they'd like to see the plowing separated. Plowing to the transfer station and the transfer station line, plowing to the town hall, and plowing to the fire station, am I saying that right? Is what I was told, so I don't know if that's a conversation you wanna have with Robin, but that's what was brought up to him.
It was, it was. Cause lumped into roads, so they like to have separate things for each one, so it'd be more transparent.
Well, I can tell you right now, as a nine-year road commissioner, getting time cards are bad enough from the guys, but imagine having to have them stop and say, okay, it's 8 o'clock, we're gonna go in the transfer station, leaving at 8:30, you know? That, you can then go down to town hall and dock another hour when you're running from one spot to another spot. That'd be almost impossible. I don't know about you, Robin, you do it. What do you think?
What'd you say?
I think, I, I, I think it's absolutely.
This would give, this would give the road agents additional accounts to manage?
No, less, so essentially, well, yeah.
What all, the only difference would be, is at the end of the day, they can say it's costing, cause I know where they're going with this, okay? Um, well, we're gonna have this much wrapped up in plowing the, uh, transfer station. You know, maybe they ought to be doing it themselves or something, or, you know, whatever. Cause right now, all the plowing is just clumped in. The fire station, they have to do it with the fire station too. They have to do it at the town hall.
And the rest feel.
Yeah, oh, I'm gonna go push back the snowbanks, you're gonna stop and dock my time, you know? That's the case, what we ought to be doing, right? Cause they, you know, they get kinda clever here. What they ought to do is every road, we're gonna stop and, how long did it take to do Sanborn Road and this road and that road? That's where you're going with this.
Have we got a meeting with the Warren Finance Committee?
Uh, you have a meeting on Monday.
By the way, I will not be there, just to make that clear, why don't we defer this topic until then? And let the Warren Finance Committee talk about why they wanna do it.
Mom is out of town Monday.
I'm out of town Monday, so. Defer it to when I'm not here.
All right. Robin's budget good to move forward, we do not see, need to see him again, he's made the changes you requested. I think my chair is through the same thing, every time I look over, I feel like I'm getting lower.
You look like a little kid.
I end up on the floor here.
And you want me to get that seat?
Sure.
Thanks, Tom.
Are we good with the, with the transfer station's budget?
I think the budget.
Fine, Robin, go.
Yeah, it looks good. Thank you.
Thanks, Robin.
Thank you, Robin. Have a great one. Feel like an adult now. All right. All right, yeah. Sam, are you up next?
Good day. Happy, no more snow days, please?
Oh, boy, no more snow.
All right, so a couple of explanations on Sam's before she goes through, because we had a little, um, we didn't get it as updated as we would have liked, but I, I think that we have it in pretty good shape now. Um, the salary on the front page for the rec director is the 5% increase that the board supported. Um, general maintenance, um, you actually went down about $2,000. And then the miscellaneous expense, based on the treasurer's calculations, went from 14,000 to 40,000. Um, and then the next page, she's got her incomes, uh, rec income and program fees.
I'm sorry, I was, um, reading, uh, listening, why did general, uh, maintenance go down?
Well, she's gonna go over that, if you get to page three, you'll see what she has, she has a nice breakdown. And so she's gonna go through those two pages, but at the end, um, we've got a little note indicating the two items that are not in the budget, so we just don't wanna include those, so.
Those are kinda like special.
Yeah, all right, Sam, so start with general maintenance, it went from 10 down to 79.
Where are we now?
First page.
First page, yeah.
Second, second line.
Went from 10.
10, 5 to 7, 9, you went down on that?
I'm not sure where.
It went down 20%.
I'm sorry, I'm not, trying to remember what it was, I can't remember what was on the original. What was on the original one?
What's the front year trending at?
Well, your original would be 10, 10,000.
All right, so let's just add them up, so I'm looking at your spreadsheet, so you have 1,020 for porta potties, you have 3,000 for the mowing.
Yep.
Contract, which at some point we should talk about, cause we don't have a contract. 2,000 for field maintenance, 400. And then 400, and then you have 1,500, right?
Yeah, 1,500 is just, just to cover the electricity.
Okay, so you're at 7920, if that's, did I add in all your grounds maintenance, okay. So that's what Kelly did, she added those, um, five items.
And it's trending at 13% of that, that figure, so. So I think we're, going down is the right way to look at this. They've only spent 1325 year-to-date. They have 8725, uh, balance left.
In the maintenance?
In the 505 line, yeah.
Jennifer, what were those lines again, the, the porta potty?
Porta potty, 1,020, mowing contract, 3,000. Field maintenance, 2,000, baseball field mix, 400, and electricity, 1,500. So if you look on your very last page at the bottom, it says grounds maintenance.
Oh, that's what I'm missing, okay.
And we still gotta figure out the electricity there, cause we're not getting billed for the electricity, so we're probably gonna have a, a bill coming in. And no one seems to be able to figure out why we're not getting a bill.
They don't have any record of the meter. It's like it never happened.
Is there one down there?
Oh, yeah, right on the side of the shop.
Well, there would have to be, I guess, yes.
We have all asked them numerous times.
I can make a phone call.
You can lead a horse to water.
Right, they'll bill us when they're ready.
I, I got somebody there that kinda does that.
Oh, remind me, I talked to the guy from the depot.
Oh, you did, good, awesome.
So no real reason why that went down, Sam?
Nope.
I guess there's no real reason why it was stated at 10, probably should have been 7920 all along, so.
I went up a little bit on the mowing contract, just to kinda give us that little bit of a buffer, in case.
We need to go out to bid for that, that hasn't been put out to bid since I've been here.
And the porta potty has never been on.
Seacoast maintenance?
Uh, whites, I think.
Uh, whites, I'm sorry, whites.
Yeah, Seacoast.
It does a great job, not, you know what I'm just saying, you go out to bid for everything else, I'm not.
So you said the porta potties what?
The porta potties have never been listed on this either.
Okay.
It's always been per sport, listed under each sport. Um, but kind of what I wanted to do, kinda moving forward, is instead of having the porta potties gone and removed for two months, where during those two months, we have people that are still using the grounds, especially if there's no snow, and once there is snow, theoretically, if it would have been a colder year, we would have had the ice rink going, so we would have had to have them bring it back again. We thought it would be better to just leave the porta potty there year-round.
You, you keep it open up there anyways, they plow it out so they can at least.
Yeah, usually they plow it out, sometimes it hasn't been, this year I haven't been too worried because it's, we haven't had it.
If you do that, then I would suggest have making some sort of platform so you can mount it to it.
Okay.
So it can't blow over, it can't be run over or anything like that.
And that price is the 85 a month, I had called them to confirm with them that they would stay at that price for the next year. Yeah, cause their, their normal price, I think, is like 115 or something a month. So they're giving us the discount, and they noted that they would do that July to, to July again.
What are you using for storage now?
I don't know. Right now, we still have in there, we.
That may, that may, I don't know that you can count on using that, we talked about getting shed, is that in here?
Yes, that's on here. Um, I don't know if you want me to jump straight to the shed, or if you wanna go through anything else first.
I just already threw it.
Yep. Okay.
We're trying to figure out how that 40,000 number comes up with, so just bear with us, cause it's not adding up. 8600.
You talking about miscellaneous items?
Well, in the beginning, when we said our budget went from 14 to 4530, if you add these totals, I'm not sure that they add up to that, 3300?
No, I thought the.
2,000. 7,000.
Cause the shed must be part of that miscellaneous.
Well, it says.
No, it's not?
1,500.
We'll get, we'll get into that.
No, this doesn't, no, this doesn't add up to that, I don't think.
All of the numbers add up to, we've had to, I made a couple of changes to it after the warrant and finance meeting the other night.
You made changes to this?
Just a couple, yeah.
I give up. I mean, I specifically told you not to just make any changes until the board saw it.
That's, that's fine, we can go off of what's there, cause it's, it's, it's not much changes at all.
What kind of changes would they have been?
Um, it's just adding paint to the flag football and removing the higher ampage from the concession stand. And then the 1,500, I'm guessing it's not, that's barbecue night at 1,500?
Because we have that on this year's already. So I'm gonna have him come out this year on, this year what we have in there still.
All right, Sam, so I, we, Kelly and I both added it separately, and we came up with the same number, if we take the totals from each sport, not touching your revenues.
Yep.
The totals from each sport. And then when we get down on the second page, we did the sports supplies miscellaneous, and we did the barbecue.
Yep.
I'm not adding in the grounds maintenance, cause that's a separate line. Right? The grounds maintenance, we already went over, so that totals 33,700.
Oh, not including any of the ground maintenance?
Well, the grounds, remember this form that you filled out when you got these blank ones?
Yeah.
Okay, so the grounds maintenance was its own line. Right, so you filled that out, and that's where we got the grounds maintenance number? So we wouldn't add it in a second time, right?
We added the grounds to that, I believe.
Yeah, we did to the, to the, uh, to the utility line.
Okay, it's on the utility line. Me and, me and Kim had to sit down and do it together.
We're just going by these numbers that.
Right.
We turned in, so, just so you know.
Okay.
What we're looking at.
So really, the miscellaneous expense should be lowered by.
6830.
Well, I'm thinking 7920, right, if that's added in there.
But it's not added all in, only 6830 of it is.
Do you have this in an Excel spreadsheet by chance, or what doc, kinda document?
The, the breakdown of all of it, yeah.
Can you just send it to us?
Yep, that's what I sent.
Right, but it's not adding up, so I'm trying, if I can put it, if it's in Excel, I can do some quick formulas and figure out where the number is off. We just don't wanna look like you're asking for more than, you know, more of an increase than you are.
Yeah.
It's, I think somehow there's just a calculation, a little mishap, and we can sort it out quickly.
Something I had it twice, right?
I know I've gone through and I added all of the numbers up with the two changes that I did, and it.
So what numbers did you change?
So the only thing I changed is I removed the concession stand, the electric, uh, the electrician, the higher amp for the 500.
You took it out?
I took it out, because we have that under this year's contract.
Okay.
So we're gonna just look into getting it done this year.
So you're minusing 500?
Yep, and then at flag football, um, the only thing we didn't have there was to have any paint.
Paint?
Be able to paint, so it was 300 for that. So the number I get when I change that, um, was 7920 for the, the ground maintenance stuff.
Was 7920 for ground maintenance, right?
Yeah, all the.
So did you add the, the $300 to the flag football, or to ground maintenance?
Nope, 300 was to flag football.
Okay, so then let's, let's just go through it real quickly, do you have your calculator out?
Wouldn't that be on the ground maintenance?
That's really part of just that sport, so it's easier, she's already, do you have your, um, calculator?
Yep.
Okay, so let's just start, let's look at baseball real quick, so baseball is 8,600, correct?
Yep.
Okay, uh, gymnastics is 1,700?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, soccer looks like 3,300?
Yep.
2,000 for basketball, right?
Yep.
Sharing is 7,000. Uh, flag football, we're gonna go up to 1,600.
Yep.
Right? That's gonna change to 16, the ice rink is 300. Swim lessons is 4,500.
Yep.
And then tree lighting is 800.
Yep.
And then this one, 22 less five is what, 17?
Yep, 1700.
1700.
And then the miscellaneous.
And then 500 for miscellaneous, and then the only thing that we should be adding in now is barbecue, field days and movie nights.
Which is the 15.
1,500.
So it's 33,5.
So make sure operating budget 33,5, not 40,530.
We got some savings already.
There we go.
So on page one, $40,000 number should be changed to 33,500. Dennis will make sure we get you some updated copies.
The total's what?
33.
So the miscellaneous went from 14,4 to 33,5.
Yep.
Okay, that's with her paint and with the flag.
And with all the, the ground maintenance stuff, it's seventy-nine, twenty.
Yeah, that number was already right in the top copy that they had out.
That makes sense, okay.
Okay, so now, we don't have as much of an increase to explain, so that's good. So now, why don't you just go through the board and tell them how, basically why we went from fourteen thousand to thirty-three, what you've added in this year's budget?
Yep, so, this past year, we've done new uniforms for soccer, we've done, um, some more cheer ones, because a lot of the cheer ones that we had were either really old, or they're really stained. Um, because one of the uniforms that we had in the past had too much white here, so when you do too much white with all the kids.
Yeah.
It doesn't stay white very long, and there's no way to get it out. Um, so we did add more uniforms on, on the cheer as well, but we did add for baseball to get new jerseys.
Are they all new uniforms, or just some new uniforms?
Just some have been, because we didn't.
Are they still gonna be white, or?
No, the ones that we got, the new ones that we got this year.
Yeah?
Are, they have white here, but it's, it's more blue than the white.
Gotcha.
So it. Match up with the other ones that?
Yeah, we used it, um, the uniforms that we got this year, we were able to use for one of our groups, and then our other group, our younger group, had the other ones. So it, it worked out that we were able to, to have the matching uniforms for each group. For baseball, we were looking at doing the uniforms, keep the pants, um, the jerseys are old, they're starting to pull apart because they're all the pressed ones.
When you say keep the pants, what do you mean?
So they have, with baseball, you've got your, your shirt and your pants.
Yeah.
So the pants are still fine, I'm not worried about the pant conditions at this point.
We're gonna keep them. Okay, I didn't know if they were keeping them.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we would keep those.
Okay.
Um, and if, we have some parents that don't like the fact of reusing pants over the years, so they can absolutely go get themselves their own pair of pants from Walmart or wherever. The jerseys, um, they have, the ones that we have currently are more like a cottony material, ones that kind of absorb everything and hold in the stench and the sweat. The ones that we are looking at, they are a moisture wickening, and it also has all of your colors and your numbers embedded into the material. So you're not gonna have to worry about them fading, you're not gonna have to worry about numbers peeling off of them, cracking off of them, anything like that. So they should last a lot longer than the ones that we currently have.
Do we have an inventory of, of the uniforms that we have for every single sport right now? Because we bought a lot of money, we bought a lot of uniforms last year with similar.
Yes.
Similar pitches of why we needed them, I mean, I feel like we spent a lot of money in uniforms last year, but we never, there's no checks and balances of, I know you were having trouble at one point getting them back, um, of what we actually bought last year versus each sport.
I have, I've made myself spreadsheets, so I have a list of all of the numbers and the sizes of jerseys and that that we have. So I'm just currently updating them as we're going.
Yep.
So, when you buy these jerseys, are you getting prices from other, um, I don't know what you call it, designers or whatever? People who put the, you know, do the embroidery and all that?
So we've gone through typically in the past two different places, uh, the one over in Dover, and then McKinney.
Yep.
Um, lately, I've been going through McKinney for a lot, because he seems to be, he's been really good about it, and he also has been giving us more price breaking.
What about like village, uh, sign by design, and stuff like that? You, you, what we've found is, because I have shirts made up now and then, this and that, that, some of these places that you might be using seem to be a lot more money than the places I use, you know, that I've gotten prices from. So it might be a good idea to look out, look for a couple, you know, I know McKinney does a good job, I'm not saying they don't, but the prices are kinda steep compared to some of the other places when it comes to some of the, um, embroidery stuff or whatever. Embroidery, stamps, or whatever.
Based on policies, you should anyways.
You should anyways, but what I'm thinking is, if you do that, you might be able to buy more jerseys.
Save more money.
Right. Get some pricing.
Yeah.
So basically, we're gonna bid it out?
Yeah.
Right.
That'd be fine.
Uh, overall, so, what's our bid, is it three thousand, our policy?
Well, it depends, depends on how much you're spending.
Well, it's all talk about up to three thousand, I think you can do, um, three, they don't have to be sealed bids at that point. Anything over that, you'd have to do a sealed bid process. I'm not a big fan of that, because, you know, you don't always get the best product because it's cheap.
Well, that's exactly it.
In service.
When, when.
Well, you don't have to pick the cheapest price.
No.
I say, because when you're looking for the jerseys, you want ones that are actually gonna look good, that'll last.
Exactly.
You just wanna make sure you're getting a good price.
Yep.
That's all.
Because I don't wanna have to buy jerseys again, come to you guys again in two years, and be like, oh, these are falling apart, they're all withered, they're all.
Two different ones.
What do you got, Jennifer?
So, uh, for purchases over a thousand dollars, the department heads are required to solicit no less than three bids in writing, and then there's a separate, um, competitive bid for anything over five thousand. Those are by, um, sealed bid, so, and I would think, and the board can certainly correct me, I mean, are we looking for a bid for the season? We've got a budget, we know roughly what we're gonna be spending, we're not looking to go out to bid per sport, let's try to do it all at once.
They should be done together.
So let's do one bid for everything, so we don't have to do it each time.
One company.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So get an idea of how many you're gonna get for each sport, and then let's put it out to bid.
Do you have a list of vendors that you could suggest?
I got a couple, yeah.
I got a couple leaders as well.
Alright, you got some, alright.
Perfect.
Good, alright.
So other than uniforms, what other increases?
Um, for the baseball field, we're looking to get, we would really like to have a drag there, that we can use it regularly on our own, instead of having to have someone come up with one.
Oh, yeah.
Um, because it, the field that is there right now, it doesn't take long as soon as it's done the first time, that the roots are still embedded so deep, that they are coming right back up, and it's almost looking like a full-on grass field. Um, spotty grass field, but a grass field. So we're trying to eliminate that, so if we can have a drag that's right there on the field with us at all times, it's not gonna be a recurring expense, because it would be a one-time buy and then store, um, and use it throughout the season to be able to, to clean up the field every time.
You say there are roots coming up?
Oh, yeah, grassroots, not come up through the.
Yeah.
Not tree roots?
No, 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 it's all grass.
They're like, they're more like a reed.
Yeah, it's all that, it's not real good grass either.
No, I went up with this, my contractor with my power, he can, he kinda like rotates it up and levels it. One thing you guys do need updates, you need to add material to that field.
Oh, yeah, that's on here.
I was gonna say.
Yep, that's on here.
No, it's, um, sand, it's an infield mix.
It's like a sand clay, yeah.
Okay.
Because it doesn't have all the stones, so it makes it so that all the, the underground growth.
What about the grass area? What condition is that?
The grass area? Uh, we, we've gotta reseed this year.
You are?
Yep, we are gonna seed.
You've got dips and this and that out there, but that.
It's gonna, it's what it is pretty much.
Well, to fix that, that, that's a, that's a huge undertaking.
Yeah.
If you knew what happened. So, it, it is, yeah, it would be shimmying and, yeah.
It would probably get us into a headache that we don't even wanna deal with.
Yeah.
That'd be my assumption, by going for all the divots.
How many new sports are on here, and did the board approve those? I'm gonna miss, how many new sports?
Um, it was the flag football that we had talked about, that we needed to get approved through the board, because we all needed to vote on it, and that was one that was approved this past year.
And then gymnastics, was that new?
Uh, gymnastics was listed as tumbling.
Of tumbling, yep.
So, did we approve the flag football?
You guys did, yeah.
We did, okay.
Because you said that we had to vote on just the sport aspect.
Yeah.
Of things through our board, and then come back to you with it, and you guys were okay with that.
I, I know.
Yep.
The mats, huh, for cheering, those are expensive.
They're one-time have-to-purchase, because right.
Where are you gonna store them, you don't use the mats at the school?
We use them at the school, but we're looking at doing more cheer. Um, so one of the things that we're trying to do, that we would really like to do, is we want to do, um, in June, we wanna do like a cheer clinic. So, the kids right now, with the cheer that they have, they only have the one season for basketball. When they get into high school, it's huge competition, and they don't have any of the experience with it. So they end up basically drowning, or not even bothering to, to pursue it, um, or fighting for a spot. So we're trying, what we'd like to do is, the coach that we've had actually, throughout the idea, and she really wants to, to help lead it, is to be able to do some competitions in cheer.
So bring them here, get everybody, that would get more interest in it.
Mm-hmm, yep, so basically, it will get more kids to, to really be in it. Um, so in June, we'd be doing a cheer clinic during the summer, just to kind of have kids work on it, um, understand more of the basics, do some more of the, the stunting and whatnot, and then going off of there, and having a group that would be the travel cheer team per se, the, the competition team, but still doing the regular basketball as well, basketball season.
So where will the mats go, to the school?
So, that kinda comes up to our shed, storage.
Where is that in here?
That's at the very bottom, so I don't know if you wanna re, revisit that one after.
So you're complaining it's a storm in the shed?
Yes, yep.
Along with the drag?
Yes.
How big is the shed?
Do we wanna go into the shed right now?
I thought it's where, I thought that's where you were going, I'm sorry.
No, that's good, no?
Nope, so I was looking at, um, like a wood shed, just a, a made-to-order, not going through Home Depot or anything, because they're really chintzy. Wanna get something that's actually gonna last. So I was looking more at what the largest size was that could be trailered in, I think it was like a, um, was it like a sixteen by twenty? Uh, and that was giving us right around the fourteen thousand mark for ones that were willing to give us some off for the program. However, um, after meeting with the warrant and finance the other night, we were talking, and I kinda liked the idea that we were kinda passing back and forth about looking for maybe a bigger building, because we can get a bigger building with a steel building, and be able to use it more.
More.
Be able to do like, some of our cheer stuff inside, we'd be able to actually store our stuff and have enough space to maneuver around.
To actually carry out cheer in the building?
Yep, so it would.
That's gotta be a much bigger building.
So that one, um, for a good example.
At that point.
It's like a twenty by thirty is like twenty-one thousand.
No, but if you, I can imagine what the ideas were, but at that point, you oughta start considering a rec center, if you're gonna start doing that.
Right, I mean, two exits, it's gotta be safety issue.
You gotta have utilities in there?
Yeah.
Heating.
You're gonna need heating, or circulation of air, and.
Yeah, it would be.
You're gonna hold events in there, or activities.
Well, the problem is, you go from storage to an event hall, that's pretty much what you'd be going from. So, you gotta figure out one or the other, because there's two big differences.
Even if we had, if there was an interest in an event hall, that we still need storage. And it seems to me a wood storage shed would make a lot of sense, and if they, if there's an interest in doing some kinda building, then, you know, let's, you know, somebody can bring that forward, but.
I, I would rather myself, if I, if I was to put a build-in, anywheres, I would want it there.
Yeah.
On a, if, these buildings are fine and all that, it's wet up there.
Mm-hmm.
You know, how long is it gonna be until it's rotted out the bottom of it, you know, if you're gonna spend the money, spend it right.
That's kind of what we were.
So what do you say?
Put a foundation in, you know, and either slab or whatever, and have, have one just built on site, that's something that's legit.
A storage building?
Yeah, you know, like, you know, all they need is like a twenty-four by twenty-four garage-type building, you know, so they can put all their stuff in it, just for that.
No.
Uh, you know, the, the hull and, uh, you know, you can buy them down at one-eleven, they're fine and all that, but those are temporary storage buildings. If you're gonna do one, you do a build-in, build-in.
Well, that's kinda what we were talking about at the, the warrant and finances. The wood eventually, it's gonna end up rotten out from underneath us, where like a metal building will last longer.
But.
Kinda has.
But you went from storage to having events in it, okay, and then, and then now you're talking huge area, okay, which whether or not you have it up there, you probably don't. We don't have, we're putting parking lots in, you want to put playgrounds in, now you're talking about having a, uh, an area big enough to do cheerleading in, uh, we just gotta turn it into a really small parking lot. So, I guess, I guess we could take some of the money from the parking lot and put it towards that, because those parking lots can be half the size. So you, what you guys gotta do is figure out exactly what you're gonna do.
You know, with the guy, this rotting of the wood, can't you just put that, put those on, uh, some cement footing?
You, you, well, you could raise it up.
Raise it up, so that, that's not gonna rot.
But, you know, but the way I look at it is, at the end of the day, if you're spending, you know, it's like buying a car, you know, you're gonna buy a car with crank-up windows or not, you know, electric, you know? A little extra money, you get the ones with the electric windows, and you get what you want. Um, I, I don't know, I'm not much on these bandages.
I guess, I guess I'd love to know what it's gonna cost, if you can get a storage building for fourteen, given what you're talking about for a building.
We're just talking about a shell, we're not talking insulation, you know, we're just talking about a shell.
Garlet or sort of perfect example. I mean, that's about that store that we bought, that you put the, all the prep work you had to do underneath. We bought one of those from one-eleven to put the farm store in, and it was close, it was pretty much that number, but it came with two-by-fours, and we had to insulate it, do, you know, insulate it, put the walls on, with the flooring in.
No, electrical, nothing.
Yeah.
Wood, wood's more expensive than the metal shells.
All of the grounding, I mean, whatever, you know.
You gotta watch the metal shells because of weight load, and you could go, you can buy a, uh, one of those metal buildings from down south for practically nothing.
Oh, no.
And then what happens is a snow load, don't, don't go to our codes and all that, so.
Do you have quotes or anything for, on the shed for the board, or where did this number come from?
Um, I had quotes, but they're old at this point, that I'd need to update them.
Oh, definitely, yeah, any old.
Tom, if we can, let's move on from that, you guys will come, have her come a second time.
I just, I just wanna make sure that I'm not for holding a build-in to go and have events in. That, that would be another whole, that's a rec center-type deal. Um, stick with the idea, we need storage for your, your, your stuff now, and figure out what you're gonna do for building on that.
Yep, and the, the rec center kind of is, is on my mind, that I'd love to have one, kind of a ten-year plan. The, it wouldn't be like an event center, it would be, it's, you know, either really muggy out or something, it's gonna be a regular garage, so it'd have the regular insulation on the inside, but we could get out of the, out of the sun and out of the weather, and just be in the garage and doing our practice, we're not gonna be holding events there.
Yeah.
Type deal, if we, if that was the road that we would go down.
You know what, what you're gonna have, you're gonna find is, you're gonna start building these buildings, doing whatever, you're gonna run out of room. You know, you might have to make a land purchase if you're gonna do something like that. Because you can only, you can only put so much there because of the wetlands and everything else, and all the restrictions up there.
Is there much land down there that isn't cleared?
On the backside of the wetland.
Yeah, so you gotta cross wetlands to get to it, that's the reason why the.
So there is no additional land to use there?
You can't get to the back of it any other way?
There's.
You'd have to come off Hawk Road to do it.
I didn't know, I was just wondering.
That's a private road, and that's not, we don't wanna get into.
Garvin, I thought.
Well, yeah, Garvin, yeah, what did I say, Hawk Road?
Yeah, but it's, it's also, I, I met with Jason one day about it, and it looks like there's the possibility, where the new parking lot's gonna go, that we could probably do like a little roadway that goes down from where that new parking lot is, to connect to the back, to be able to connect that.
Hey, well, we're gonna have the engineer out there to take a look at the field, why don't you talk to them about some of these ideas and.
That'd be awesome.
Alright.
Okay.
So the only other thing, briefly, do you wanna tell them a little bit about this forty thousand dollar playground?
So, I really wanted to do the playground, but we, after talking with warrant and finance as well, kinda decided it might be best to table that idea for this year, um, just so that we can make sure we get the parking lot done.
Tell the board what your original thought was, because the idea is that you brought everything to them first, and then the meetings got switched out.
Those guys did, but.
Tell them what you were thinking, and then they'll decide if it gets next.
Yep, so the playground, what we really wanted is kind of what we had mentioned last year. Um, the reason why we were using the Little Tykes, little buildings and, and whatnot for the kids to play with, is we have a lot of parents that come that have, uh, multiple kids, and they might have one kid that's playing a game or in practice, and the other kid's just running around driving them crazy because they're trying to watch, but at the same time, the other kid needs their constant attention. So what we really wanted to do is, we wanted to make it more of a, like a community gathering area too, to have a fenced-in area that we could have a playground set, so that the kids could go on the slide and actually play, and, and kind of have something to do on stuff that we don't have to worry about them breaking or getting hurt on, per se, because it's just like going to a regular playground. because it's just like going to a regular playground. Um, and we had kind of gone with the idea that we could add a piece to it every year versus just getting all of it, because that type of equipment, it's all commercial and it's very expensive. You, you're looking at anywhere, if it's on discount, you can get them for maybe seven thousand for various parts, all the way up to three hundred thousand.
So, so did you price out what an actual, what you think that playground's gonna cost? That forty thousand's what you think it's gonna cost?
The forty thousand, we'd be able to do some of the stuff that's on clearance, on sale right now, to be able to do a baseline of getting something started in there.
Where would you be getting this stuff from?
Um.
It's an actual.
Was it Little Tykes, I believe?
Well, you'd have to go out to bid, but do you, do you have any examples or printouts of?
I left all of it at home, it's not been.
I mean, so.
I can send an email that has some of.
I, I think, I don't, I have no problem with the forty thousand dollars going forward. If we combine it with the parking lot, because it's gonna have to, it'll be all engineered, all in one shot. Okay, and I, I don't, I do believe by the time we do the engineer, we're not gonna have enough money for the parking lot anyways. And the forty thousand dollars, um, you know, that we can, you can, if you clump that all together, then you can add part of that in, cause they're gonna have to engineer everything together. We can, you know, you get what I'm going here? I, I think, I think it's something we should put forward.
Right.
Um, because by the time you get the parking lot done, the playground, um, and the engineering, you're gonna soak up eighty thousand bucks.
Is that what we have set aside?
Forty already for the parking lot.
Forty one, forty or forty one?
Something like that.
And then we're asking.
Forty and change, how's that?
Yeah.
Okay, and, uh, and you add the other forty, uh, you could soak up, I believe, it may give you a little cushion, it may not, but you, you're gonna soak up eighty thousand dollars by the time engineering, parking lot and playground.
How did the rec committee feel about all this?
About?
Um, the shed, um.
Budget.
The budget.
Everybody was on.
Playground equipment.
Everybody was on the same page, we actually had our, not the last meeting, but the meeting before, before it got passed in, we actually had that meeting completely dedicated to going over the budget.
So there was a vote taken?
It went over everything, everybody agreed with everything, there was a couple things they wanted me to add to it, which I did, um, like the batting cage was one thing that everybody agreed that they wanted to see added to this.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
That's a really good idea, but in most, most ballparks you go to.
I think, I think.
You need a, you need a batting cage.
I'm actually thinking that, I'm concerned we don't have enough money here.
Well, see, this is.
But I don't know how to fix that.
Can we do playground slash parking lot?
Cause I don't think this is a one year deal.
No, I don't either.
Okay, so by the time we get our engineering in, okay? Um, and then, of course, by the time we get the engineering, you know, we gotta figure out, we gotta get our bids and everything else. So you might be rolling in, this is pretty much what we do, we should be doing with that line item is we should be rolling as a reserve.
Or, or just rolling into the pot, into the athletic field?
No, no, because I believe we, we should be putting this in a reserve for that, um, you know, for the parking lot slash playground.
If you have it in a reserve, do you need to go back to the town to get approval to spend it?
Not if it's worded correctly.
Not if it's worded correctly.
So it has to be worded with the idea of what it's being used for.
That's why you combine that, you, what you do is you change it to make it playground slash parking lot.
Slash fencing.
Okay, well, that would be fencing, whatever. Okay, that way there, you can pull the money out for your engineering and then you can combine them both together and pull it, and if you need more money, uh, if we come back and we get our bids, we need more money, then we've already got an eighty thousand dollar head start on it.
Okay.
I'd rather do it like a reserve fund to do that than.
As long as you can get at it without.
As long as you can spend it.
Town meeting.
Yeah, exactly.
Cause I, with the playgrounds, you can go through and you can do a bunch of grants and that too, so we can get more off of some of this.
Well, we need the engineering done first, that's the big thing, cause especially with the parking lot, we gotta make sure everything's gonna fit.
Yeah, well, we were, where we were originally thinking of doing like the playground would be over next to the basketball courts.
But where are you gonna put the batting cage?
Batting cage would have to be along this, the, uh, field.
So, I mean, really, she's gonna have the engineer up there, maybe they oughta start trying to, cause they can lay out where everything should go, I like to see a, a plan of where everything goes.
Rendering, I miss.
You know, and if they, if Sabago Tech coming down, it's okay, where, does he need this spot for shed? Proposed shed, okay? Batting cage, playground, parking lot, um, and then, that, then they have something to go on to do their engineering. I think that's what we really oughta start off at. And by putting this money forward, I have no, I have no issue putting it forward. I, I think it's gonna go to a good cause, and wait a year, while we keep waiting a year, you know, it's like the parking lot, we keep waiting here, I think we're finally on track to actually get something done. We got permit for the road, we got an engineering company, uh, we got some funds in the bank. I think this is something we don't wanna wait a year on.
So, okay. So we'll, the board will talk more about it at one of their meetings, uh, most of the departments have come back at least two times, so we'll be in touch.
Okay.
On what they wanna do.
And then I'll work on, I'll send over some of the information with some of the pricing, that way you guys can kinda see some of them. I think the only other thing that we have really added, um, in every sport, you'll notice the uniforms professionally cleaned. Um, McKinney being local, easy to get to, easy to grab things, he does two dollars a pound for having everything washed, but it means that we don't have to bring it to our house and then we have it sitting around because it's stagnant going in.
You should have to do that.
And that's exactly, and we also don't have to worry about using, um, something that we're cleaning them with that somebody's allergic to or has an issue.
Sure.
McKinney takes it all, they process it all and then they fold it and put it back in a tote, if we brought that, or in bags. And they separate it all by sports.
How much did all that cost for the cleaning?
Two dollars a pound.
They have a hundred dollars per sport.
I put a hundred dollars.
So when you, when you get your price in for the uniforms, make sure you get a price in for that also, because that could be a determining factor whether or not we use them or somebody else. If somebody else doesn't have that option, you know, um, just make sure that's part of the, uh, the quotes, please.
Okay, you can do that.
Anything else here?
No, sir.
Thank you. Good to see you, Sam.
Good to see you, feels like it's been forever.
Yeah.
I see, you just don't wanna see me anymore, Phil.
You guys are having meetings on Sundays, I could do that.
We've kinda tabled doing Sundays, we've been doing them scattered.
That's good, good, awesome, thanks.
Sam, can you send me your Excel spreadsheet?
Yes, I will do it when I get home, I gotta go onto my computer, it didn't save right on my phone, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now the warrant.
So what you have in front of you next, we're gonna spend the last twenty minutes, so we're talking about here, just twenty minutes, cause we have another meeting to prep for, um, is the warrant, so this is, uh, no changes, I guess, especially for, I think for Dennis, cause he has a copy, no changes have been made based on last year's other than taking things out, the water heater, paying off the fire truck, if it was an article that there was no, no way we were gonna duplicate, I've just removed it. All we wanna do today is go through and see what ones we can consider consolidating and we really need to talk about what special items you guys may be looking to move forward, so, um, please, I mean, don't look at the dates or numbers and we've got the, on the front page, just the people that are being elected, we've got the, um, zoning placeholders. Really, it's a matter of, you know, hopefully you guys can take this home and mark some up. I mean, if you look at some of these housekeeping articles in the beginning, they would be long, but there's no reason they couldn't be combined. Um, I mean, we're happy to make recommendations. Um, really want you to star Article eighteen so that you can look at it and figure out how you think eighteen is best suited to be written. Uh, this is our carry forward, and we've had conversations about, um, removing the account numbers, maybe.
I don't, I don't really think you need them.
I would recommend that we take them off too, as long as the treasurer is comfortable with the way the article is written to make sure that that matches trio, so there's never any doubt for her what she's rolling forward.
I, I'm, I had this epiphany, okay? Um, we're going through some of the issues right now, we're trying to figure out in our budget work, you know, whether or not, um, what our rollover monies and this and that. And so, we never had these rollovers on the road, road accounts for many years. Okay, you either you had it, you spent it, or you didn't. But we did it because, you know, we were so underfunded at the time that, you know, five thousand bucks is five thousand bucks. We're at the point now where, um, you know, we're talking almost a half million dollars a piece for each road commissioner and their paving, and we're looking at some of these budgets not even getting spent down. Where, you know, when you got thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars coming into the next year, where I think they're, they're kinda going where they weren't supposed to go. Uh, you know, I'm almost thinking for the aspect of treasury, you know, trying to keep track of all this stuff, we're getting to the point where, um, they may not have to be rolled over anymore.
Spend it that year, lose it or re-ask for it?
We're getting to the point where you got, you know, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, one year we had a rollover on one account, which you should not have. So I'm almost considering pulling those out, pulling those right out, to the point where, um, they're not underfunded anymore, they're getting everything they ask for every year.
Are we talking about the resurfacing?
Resurfacing and the summertime maintenance. Summertime maintenance, that one, back in the day, that was only structured for, the problem we're having was this, you come down to July first, two weeks before that, you wanna make sure all your purchases are done because Gillis Levine wouldn't send you a bill until August, okay? So you'd have to worry about that bills coming in and not, you know, so you'd always leave a little bit of money, so typically you'd end up losing six, seventy thousand dollars. Well, when your, your maintenance budget was only eighty thousand dollars a year, okay, that was a lot of money. Well, now, then it, then, right before I resigned as road commissioner, you were finding, there was thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars in, in the maintenance account getting rolled over. That wasn't what it was, it was set up for. I think it's become obsolete at this point where you need that rollover, because what's happening is this, when you ask for, uh, uh, what, what's, I don't even know what the number is, I, off the top of my head, for, um, what they're asking for their maintenance, but say if you ask for a hundred thousand dollars, but you're only using seventy, and you consistently only using seventy, eighty thousand, why are you asking a hundred? You should be budgeting on what, you know, what you, you should have, at least on an average. We're not doing that anymore because it's such a rollover, now we're chasing money down every year trying to figure out how much we got left over, because there's always so much left over. Um, I, I, at, at this point, I, I would, at this point, um, refund that money somewhere to another account. Like a reserve account or something, or, but, but what's left in those reserves, what's coming? But just roll them over like we're doing right now.
You put them in the general fund?
Yeah, at this point, probably.
That's with it.
Yeah.
And then, and then give them, I mean, this year they're asking for, they up to five hundred thousand each.
If the budget, um, I believe on the roads, we've asked for a list of the resurfacing projects. I don't think we've seen that.
Well, District Two just turned theirs in, it was in my box this morning.
Those say they got a list of projects and there are five roads and they're totaling three hundred thousand dollars. If, when that actually gets bid out, it's higher, then one of those roads is gonna have to be put aside. Um, another approach is to simply limit the carry forward to an amount that you would think of as a contingency amount, to cover differences between estimates and what the actual comes in at. So you cap the carry forward at thirty thousand dollars and anything above that.
But you still have the same problem we're having as, you know, so say you got sixty thousand, you cap it at thirty, then there's thirty, the taxpayer can't go and look and say, okay, this is what our budget's every year, cause it's not. Cause if you look at all the carryovers.
No, but I, I'm saying you limit the carryover to a very specific number and it's, it's, um, it's not, it, it's, it's a reasonable.
The problem with the carryovers is way, way it's looking now is there's no budget in being done.
I agree. I, that's why I wanna see a list of roads.
But honestly, but if you cap it at, let's say, twenty or thirty thousand, it's not capping it every year at that, it's, you know what I mean? So the following year, if they had twenty-five thousand, they'd only get to roll over five thousand. If you cap it at thirty, they're not gonna get thirty each year, you know what I mean, they, the next year.
I don't understand.
No, actually, actually.
They would get thirty, they would cap it at thirty thousand.
Right.
I'm, I'm saying, yes, that you would, you would have a carryover, a maximum carryover of, of an amount to be determined for road resurfacing. It's not gonna be a hundred thousand dollars, it's gonna be something to cover bid variation between what you estimated a road to be versus what it may actually come out at, and that's all it's supposed to be used for.
But Tom, at the end of the day, I understand that, okay? But that's not what they're using, you know.
No, I know, yeah, I understand what they're using.
So the, what, this is how we should, we should be doing it. Uh, your idea of getting a list of the roads and the projects, okay? We're getting to the point now where, um, where we had our last, uh, last meeting, okay? We were going over which roads and they're going from this one to that one. And I think some of the people on the finance committee and ourselves are in agreements, the agreement to that, we should be doing these projects and finishing them and this and that. But to do these, okay, you can zero these out, okay? You could zero these out tomorrow morning.
Yeah, you're just gonna request a carryover.
Because what, what they should be doing is, anybody that's doing any sort of budgeting should be doing a fifteen or a twenty percent or something like that on top of their.
You're saying you're already figuring it out.
They're already figuring it, what's happening is we're just loading up the, the oval, the, uh, the rollovers.
Well, if you wanna, if you wanna specify what that additional percentage is, that's fine with me as well. I just wanna know that there's a list of roads, they've been estimated professionally and that there's wiggle room in there in the event when you bid it out, it costs more.
If you go back to what you're talking about, I think what we should be doing is this, when the road commissioners start coming in from now on, these, it's not like back in, back when I was road commissioner, I had eighty thousand dollars. Right? So I can only do a little, little baby spot, okay? These guys are coming and asking for.
A million dollars.
Half a million dollars a piece, okay? So at that point there, there should be an estimate from each road commissioner, from F R Carroll or Pike or whoever. So when that goes on the warrant, this project is gonna cost this with this percentage of, uh, what they call a slush. You know, you're, you gotta have some movement.
Let me ask you something, when they do that, do they bid that out?
We bid out every year our paving, okay, and our reclaiming.
Who, who does the bidding?
You guys do.
We do.
We.
It's our paving bid every year.
Right, and we talk with the guys, they look at.
Did I miss that? Was I away?
You, you might have been in Bermuda or something.
Seriously.
Every year.
There's an open bid process?
Yes, I'd have to look.
Okay, good.
We tell them approximately how many ton, it's a sealed bid, Tom, it's handled by this office.
I didn't think we had that.
What ends up happening anyways is, so whoever the sealed, whoever the bid is, goes off, gives you a price on reclaiming and paving that road anyway.
So those are the numbers they're using to come up with these estimates, so.
Thank you.
And I just, I just wanna clarify real quick about what I was trying to say with the thirty thousand. You do need some sort of contingency, so whether you do it his way or you add fifty percent, that's the same. But I was, but what I was saying was that it would never go over thirty thousand. So let's say thirty thousand is the number you set, the following year, they have it down to twenty-eight thousand, they'd only be allowed to roll over two thousand, you know, it's never, it just wouldn't be to keep building up.
I wanna get rid of the old, I wanna get rid of.
I know, but I just wanted to make it clear that I wasn't saying thirty every year.
I'm, I'm fine not having the carry forwards, so long as there is a bid and a contingency is added.
I'll tell the road commissioners that, but the reason why we're doing it, I wanna do this is, but first of all, when they came and figured out how much they got for rollovers, okay, they don't even know, well, they'll, they'll know, cause they don't have any. Okay, they go off the budget they actually put forward.
With the amount of money that they're requesting this year, it might be a good year to start, because it's, we have their project.
That's what I'm getting to, we're gonna, we're gonna put a million dollars forward for paving, am I worried about rollovers?
I hope we're not gonna do a million dollars.
Well, not me either, but.
Okay, so we're, we're looking at combining some of these, so the next question, I guess, look at twenty-one. Um, twenty, and, and Kelly and I will get together and make recommendations on some of these combining, but when you look at articles like number twenty-one, um, twenty-three and twenty-four, see how those are broken down like that?
Yeah.
I mean, at the end of the day, it's all general government, what do you want to see?
Okay, why don't you let us look at it?
Okay.
We'll come back to it next minute.
All right.
Before we get off on the roads, we talked about having an assessment done.
Yep.
And, um, I think that's a great idea, and I think we should have, I, I assume the state would come in and do it probably the most economical way.
You mean that this RSMS?
Huh?
The RSMS gentleman or the state main?
Yeah, no, I'm, somebody else that's, and I would also.
What we do with the building.
And, yeah, and I would also like, uh, to have clarity around when we're gonna reclaim a road, resurface it, whatever, that there's some basis for how you decide what you're gonna do to that road. Cause right now, we're grinding, what I heard the last time, we're grinding just about everything. And do we need, it's gotta be the most expensive way of doing it. And how do we decide, how do they decide, or how is the town determined? What the approach will be for dealing with a road that's in a particular condition?
The town determines that by electing the road commissioner, and the road commissioner determines that, that's how we, that's how it's been the past.
Well, I, I, then I would question, because it's town money, I, I know it's a road commissioner's job and I, I can't, I can't quite, uh, I've gotta get familiar with that, but if we think, I think, we're spending too much money grinding our roads and there may be cheaper alternatives, I may be wrong, I'm not a road person, but I think we need to figure that out before we go appropriating any money. And so I would imagine, I, I happen to look at one town, I think I gave you a copy of it, they had a policy. They said, right, they had a policy, and it may not be the right policy, but it said, if the road had these particular conditions, this is what you did to them. And resurfacing was that, or, or grinding was at the very end, and most of the work they were doing was, was of a lesser nature, at a much, I assume, less cost.
Well, I mean, for example, this project right here going from one oh nine to the campground, um, you wanna grind that? Um, that hill has been ground there, uh, already.
Yeah, so, um, now, I would imagine the state has some expertise on this, they must. And if we're gonna have the state come in and help us assess our roads, this fellow who wrote R M R S.
Don.
I would imagine the state must have some standards for, given the condition of a road, this is what you do to repair, to maintain it. Fair?
No.
No, they don't?
Take Milton Mills Road, for instance, okay? That road is terrible, they keep working on it, they, they recommend, they recommend putting, putting a top coat on it every year. So I, for me, it's awful hard to take, I would rather do.
But you see what I'm getting at there?
Oh, no, no.
I, I don't know the right way to do it.
I'm on board with what you're talking about.
What we're talking about.
It's just who's gonna do it, and Don, just so you know, doesn't work for the state, so.
Oh, he doesn't, okay. He did, he did.
Right.
And, you know, but the only problem I have with that is, is I honestly think with him doing the RSMS, and I don't believe the RSMS is worth doing, I, I, I've been saying it right from the, it's a waste of our time and money, but at the same time, what he want, what he's asking is the same thing we just did with this building, okay? Why can't we find somebody?
Like Sabago Tech or somebody.
Maybe someone like Sabago Tech to come in and do an evaluation, a private evaluation. I wouldn't bring the state involved in with that, because the state, the way the state does and a municipality works isn't the same when it comes to the road maintenance.
Fine, I.
I'd like to find a private individual.
I don't, I don't really care who it is.
So what we do need to do is, and now I've got that on the list, so as I, do I hear you both saying, or all three of you saying that, are you interested in, in the upcoming year, instead of special projects for the roads, the extra above and beyond the regular two fifty, you wanna get an idea from Sabago Tech or somebody that, that qualifies to do that, to get us a price for engineering for the roads, right, and, and take the two fifty off for now?
Yeah, evaluation, that's all, not looking for engineering, just an evaluation.
Of all the roads.
You know, um.
And is that in addition or in lieu of the extra two hundred and fifty thousand for the special projects? Cause we're trying to write a warrant.
I wanna get to the point where, instead of doing the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, okay, you know, the two hundred and fifty thousand for paving.
Additional, yeah.
No, I'm talking about the two hundred and fifty thousand bucks we originally put forward.
The first two fifty, okay.
Guys listening to me?
No.
Okay, I didn't think so. I, I, honestly, we, to get, to make this process to the point where we're, we're working on the roads, projects are getting done, that, you know, completed, why aren't we going the two hundred and fifty thousand that they originally get? And I wanna, I want to price out each project, I want the project priced.
Okay.
So it could be more two fifty, it could be four hundred, it could be one project for four hundred thousand.
Or you just cut back the list.
Yeah, okay, but each, on that, instead of just putting two hundred and fifty thousand, saying, well, give me a, this road's gonna cost four hundred thousand.
And I wanna know what they're doing to it.
Exactly. A list of what's being done.
Are they just resurfacing it? What are they doing?
At town meeting, someone could look at that and say, well, gee, I don't think that road's that bad. I think they could shim and overlay that. I wanna make an amendment to that to lower it to half the number. You know, they could do that for a reason.
So for any surfacing, we wanna break down the projects, and you guys will figure out the number, because they don't have to be the same number on both sides of towns.
Look, it's, we went from, what, a couple hundred thousand dollars three years ago?
Was it $99,000?
$9,000.
All right, $200,000 apiece?
$99 each.
I had $99,000.
Yeah, for one district.
One district, so $200,000.
$200,000.
Then to 200.
And then to 200, 400.
Oh, one, 150.
150, so 200 to 300 to 500 to a million.
Yep.
There's something wrong with that. Now, unless they're telling us our roads are in very poor shape, and...
We've been behind on our paving for quite a while.
Yeah, right.
But I think just throwing money at it doesn't say we're gonna spend a million dollars. Isn't, isn't the solution?
We'd like to do it the, the right way, and the, you know, not waste money.
And, and plus, when you throw money at it, and, and the money's not getting spent, that's, that's the other issue.
All right, so we need to find someone that can do an evaluation of all the roads, and we're gonna reach out to the road guys to get a...
I would say all the roads. No, not all the roads. I don't wanna turn this into a town. You pick the few worst roads that we've got.
You ask the road commissioners?
Give it a valuation on those roads.
So ask the road commissioners for their top five, top 10 worst roads?
Is it not, I assume roads are like equipment. You can do preventive maintenance on them that will extend the life of the road. So if we're just focusing on the worst roads, we're not gonna be doing the preventive...
But you got general maintenance. You got your general maintenance money for doing that.
But I, I, I'd like to know that there's a process that they have for identifying the conditions of our roads, and what the appropriate either maintenance or retrofit, refurbishing, or...
That would be, that's kinda the same idea.
No, but if you only look at three or four roads, David, you're not looking at a broad...
He wants them to townwide, then go down to certain areas.
We can do that. I don't care.
I don't know, yes.
Just to see where they all stand, rate them.
Because they may say, well, wait a minute, why don't you just fill these cracks for this one? Or, I, I don't know, but there are various ways of doing this that can, that can extend it, extend the life.
The assessment they're doing on this, they're giving ideas of how to fix it. If we could find somebody to do the same thing on the roads, you know, you might find that the four, four worst roads that we got aren't that bad.
Okay. So we're looking for somebody to get us a price and evaluation of all the roads in town, and then, okay. Road, the two road, roads will break down the project, so...
We're on the same page, it's different.
All right, we're just gonna talk about special articles real quick, and not details of them either, whether I'm putting placeholders. So we have the shed, we have the playground. Fire department phone system, we're working on prices for that. That came from Tom, the liaison. Just prices for a possible warrant article for a phone...
He mentioned a phone system down there.
Right now, they're walking around.
The finance committee asked them to put a separate thing forward for that.
Oh, I didn't know that. Okay.
Yeah, which I, I'm surprised, I didn't know that was their job to do that, but they did.
Okay.
Okay, a price for the transfer station engineering work?
Yes. I'd say yes.
Yeah?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. We do, I did find the Westshore Drive, the estimate based on, on, in your first culvert, or whatever one you guys chose, and based on what you guys appropriated. There's a difference in money, so we're gonna need...
We had an estimate from RH, from Ransom.
Ransom, right.
And we have 329. 329. I believe the estimate from Ransom was more. So should we top off that budget to at least agree with Ransom's estimate?
No, no, because remember, Ransom, when they did the estimate for that, we asked, why is he in kind as much as doing the big ones? And she added in the trap, you know, getting the roads ready to go around and all that stuff that was added in. I honestly...
I just wanna make sure we got enough money, David. That we don't get up to July, or we're gonna, we're gonna send out bids, we're gonna get a number. It will be past the time, probably, of when we'll have a warrant ready for the June meeting. So we gotta make sure we got enough money to do the project.
I don't, I, I myself would prefer, because we don't know, we're just throwing darts at a wall right now. We don't know. Because it could be a lot more money, and we still wouldn't put enough forward. I think we get the engineering, you know, back, get our RFPs out. When those numbers come back to us, I don't wanna put any more money forward until we know what the number is, then we vote on it.
Because the companies... We're short.
Then we have a special town meeting and ask for it. David saw it too, is that, and we talked about this, is actually similar to the facility RFP. Basically, these contractors can go to the warrants, which are posted online, and say they have $525,000. We're gonna come in at $525,000.
Well, that happened to our town shed.
Well, that, right.
Our town shed, they were within $5,000 of it, you know?
So we have $525,000.
Special town meeting, then?
We're scratching that. We have...
I just think it's better off, because we may not, we, we, we could put $100,000, it would still be short, 50, we'd still have to do the same thing.
Any other places that you anticipate putting money aside for any projects?
What about money for this road assessment?
I gotta got that. That's personally, yes. I gotta find a number. Anything else? Any bridges, any culverts, more for this parking lot?
We're gonna have a report.
Where are we in bridges? Do we know?
I think we put a halt on the bridge on the road for a little bit, didn't we?
Yeah. Well, it didn't need to be done.
No, so we just, they got money in their budgets for maintenance and stuff right now, so...
Something to think about. You don't need to decide on the spot, but we're getting closer to you needing to decide, so... Any other special, you know, like water, hit out the fire truck. If you think of something, let me know.
No. Thank you.
Now, at the end of the year, what are we allowed to increase the budget without? Is there, is there a certain percentage we're allowed to...
The levy, yes. I'll have to do some research, and I'll feel Kelly.
I mean, we're, we're increasing, if we, if we end up going through the road thing, that's a half million there, you know, there's quite a bit of...
I'm sorry, what is this about?
There, we're only allowed to increase the entire budget by a certain percentage a year.
Without voting on it a little differently, so I...
Wait a minute, give, give me more on this.
I, I really can't, because it's a, and not to take away from Kelly, it's a treasurer piece, it's only happened and acted once in probably the last five or eight years.
It did happen.
So I'll have to, I'll do some digging and let you know what he's talking about.
What's happening with this, I don't think we'll need money for it, but this, this new bill that was approved at the state for senior relief on taxes?
So right now, they are still fighting amongst themselves in the legislation. It's still, last time I spoke to O'Donnell's, it still looked like it was gonna be scrapped.
The whole program?
That would be, I mean, I hate to say it...
Well, and what I've told my seniors, and I put a lot of pressure on the board, but what I've told my seniors is this, is that regardless of that program or not, the board strives every year to keep the tax rate at what it is or lower it. So even if this program is scrapped, then, you know what I mean?
Yeah, we still have our job to do.
Right, so by, by keeping it, well, no, by keeping the tax rate the same every year, or at least we're dropping it, then they're not gonna need this program.
I would be...
Right?
But that's probably not realistic.
It is, but based on your undesigned fund balance.
Well...
You know, I...
This year, definitely.
I, yeah, well, we could do some offsetting, but honestly, at the end of the day, what we should, what the state should be doing is, instead of just giving it a broad, anybody 65 and older, okay, you know, bang, your tax is frozen, is, you know, have, do a form there for tax relief. You know, if your income is so, you know, then you can do it.
Means test it.
Yeah, exactly. But not do a broad like that, because I mean, there's a lot of 65 and older that don't need that.
All right, so Chairman, I need to be excused.
I'm just saying in general, you know, I mean, you've got a lot of billionaires and stuff, their, their taxes would be frozen, you know? And it just doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Okay, all right. All right, well, that was fun. Are we done? I think we're ready to adjourn. We'll be back at 6 o'clock.
Make a mo, do we have to make a motion? We didn't know.
No, it's just a workshop. This seems very informal. Thank you.